Board members report to the stage. Colors? Rise for the presentation of the colors. Okay. Is that everybody?
If any of our students are here for the military salute, if you can come over with Andy, she's waving the folder.
I now reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Education at 6:01 PM with Bridge, Cruz, Monroe, Na, and Shaw present. Before we begin, please silence all electronic devices and note that these proceedings are being recorded. Pat?
The Board met in closed session from 3:55 PM to 5:45 PM regarding conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, one matter, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, one matter, a student admission, student readmissions, student discipline matters, conference with labor negotiators ACT and CSEA, public employee appointment, coordinator MTSSB, public employee discipline dismissal release, and public employee performance evaluation superintendent. The Board appointed Sangita Murar as coordinator MTSSB in health services effective July 1, 2023 by a vote of 4-0 with Bridge, Cruz, Monroe, and Shaw voting yes and Na absent during the vote. No further action was taken, which requires public disclosure.
Thank you, Pat. I just want to note that tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led during the presentation of colors. We are now at one of the year's most important traditions, the military salute. It's important because the Board of Education strongly believes in honoring and supporting students for his or her commitment to what is an all-volunteer force, the United States military. But before we begin, with us tonight are the Chino Young Marines who will present the colors. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the presentation of colors. Let's take a moment to recognize those present who are or have been part of the U.S. military service. Please stand so that you too may be acknowledged for your service. Board members, Dr. Enfield, please join me as we honor and congratulate the nation's newest, brightest, and bravest enlistees. Mrs. Yarboy, if you could join us to begin?
On behalf of Chino Valley Unified School District and the entire community, we are very proud of these students and their dedication and loyalty to their country and for deciding and choosing to serve their country. For a student from Ruben Esayala High School, Isaiah Lopez, appointed to United States Navy.
Thank you, Ms. Yarboy, and congratulations to Isaiah. From Chino High School, Monamu Blueford, appointed to the United States Navy. Jared Hernandez, enlisting in the United States Marine Corps. Eric Moreno, enlisting in the United States Marine Corps. And I'm sorry I keep looking behind me. We called the students to ask if they were coming, and many of them said they were coming, so I don't know if they're showing up late or if they're coming in, but if you hear your name. He'll be, yeah. I know they're, I know they're, they're coming. Nelson Rodriguez, enlisting in the United States Marine Corps. Brianna Servin, enlisting in the United States Marine Corps. Alejandra Talavera, enlisting in the United States Marine Corps. Maddie, or, sorry, Madeline Yanez. And Madeline is enlisting in the United States Navy. And lastly, from Chino High School, Samantha Vasquez, enlisting in the United States Navy. Sorry, she's enlisting in the United States Marine Corps. This is Eric Moreno, enlisting in the United States Marine Corps. Jared Hernandez, enlisting in the United States Marine Corps. I want to make a quick plug. We, we are in, I believe, Law Enforcement Appreciation Week, so I do want to thank our, our people that are serving our community, not in the military but in law enforcement. I want to thank you guys for being back there and always helping our schools. I'm honored to turn it over to Dr. Boyne Chris Johnny for Chino Hills High School.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. John, next year I'm going before you, so that way you don't steal my line. I was going to go there with that, but I too appreciate all of law enforcement and all the work that you guys do to keep us safe. With that being said, my first student that's being honored here tonight is Deshaun Garnica-Holt, who is enlisting in the United States Marine Corps. The second student being honored here tonight is Mark McFarlane, also enlisting in the United States Marine Corps. Third student being honored tonight is David Palazola, who is enlisting in the United States Air Force. My next student, who came up about five minutes ago and standing right beside me, threatening that if I don't get his name out soon, he's going to beat me up. This is Zane Poulter. Zane has been appointed to the United States Military Academy in West Point. And Chino Hills Huskies' final student being honored tonight is Alice Sandoval, who is also enlisting in the United States Marine Corps. Thank you very much, and now I'll bring up Dr. Wong for Don Lugo High School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Don Lugo High School is very proud to present the following students, and when I call your names, please come up. Liliana Barrios Lopez, enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. Katia Burgos Palozza, appointed to the United States Navy. Kimberly Ineges, enlisted in the United States Air Force. Abel Lima, appointed to the United States Navy. Eric Maraquin, enlisted in the United States Air Force. Brian Moreno, enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. Julian Rodate, enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. And finally, Samuel Sanchez, enlisted in the United States Marine Corps.
Was there any students that may have been missing and may have gotten here late that we didn't announce, or you weren't here while we announced it? If they are, please come up. We're now going to take some pictures, so parents, you are more than welcome to come up and take a picture as well. Once again, to each and every one of you, thank you for having the courage and the spirit to serve our great nation. We will now take a brief recess. Well, actually, we're gonna, we're not going to take a recess yet. Sorry, guys. Students, you are free to go. Thank you so much for everything. Okay, we're on to a very special recognition, and it's nothing short of amazing. As many of you already know, we have some incredibly talented students, not only academically or athletically, but musically. Tonight, the Board of Education recognizes two of our very own award-winning high school percussion ensemble teams from Ayala High School and Chino Hills High School. Mr. Trust and Mr. Cumbine and all of our amazing musicians, could you join me at the podium, please? Good job, guys. Good job, guys.
That must be the Ring of Champions.
Awesome job, guys. Good job. Good job, good job. There's some room over here, if you guys want to join them on that side. Here's room up on the upper right, if you want to, too. There you go. Awesome, beautiful. Okay, so if you don't already know, teams from Ayala High School and Chino High, Chino Hills High School recently competed at the 2023 Winter Guard International Percussion Scholastics Marching World category. Not only did the teams display incredible teamwork, but the music and the performances were unmatched. Ayala High School and Chino Hills High School took first and second place respectively. Absolutely beautiful and absolutely amazing. Teams, on behalf of the Board of Education, please accept these certificates as a recognition, and thank you so much. You guys are beautiful and amazing. Family, parents, and friends, you're more than welcome to come up and take pictures.
Just going to get in. Are you going to get in?
Oh. Hold on, hold on.
Peace. Oh, my God. Thank you. Can you totally hear me? Mrs. Yarboy, do you want to get in? Yeah, you can, take one with you. Oh, sorry. I apologize.
One more, guys. On, on the count of three. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Can I just say this? These kids in band are the hardest-working students. They come on campus before I do. They leave campus after I've left campus. Excellent job. Give yourselves a big round of applause.
And Dr. Enfield and President Shaw and members of the Board and Mrs. Yarboy, thank you so much for having us here and recognizing us tonight. It's still unreal to believe that we are the 2023 world champions. It's been a while, but Ayala has taken it back, and we are so excited. And we also took first place at the local association, the Southern Califor, Southern California Percussion Alliance. We are also gold medalists this year. And it's the first time that Ayala High School has won both the championship at SCPA and WGI in many, many years. So we're glad to be back again, and we appreciate everyone's support. And we had 53 students that went to Dayton, Ohio, and this is a big chunk of them, but 53 students, and we had wonderful, amazing parent support. And Mrs. Vista, our percussion manager, let's give it out for our parents. And also, as, as your director, thank you, students, for all your amazing work. You guys are awesome, and it's so great to see you here and having your medals on and, and representing Ruben Esayala High School with pride and dignity, and it's amazing to see. Thank you, everyone, for your support, and thank you for having us here.
Mr. Trust, Mr. Trust, thank you so much, and thank you, students. Thank you, family, for supporting the students. You guys did amazing. We are so honored that you came tonight. We are so proud of you, and as a former Bulldog, let's go Bulldogs. And now we will take a break, and you guys are more than welcome to go. I know you guys have a lot of things to practice and homework to do and finish the year strong, so you're more than welcome to go now. And we will take a five-minute break, just in case anybody needs to use the restroom. Okay, well, we're back. What a fun first part of our afternoon. Before we get to our comments from our student rep, I just want to quickly say something on behalf of the board. We are so proud of you. We're grateful for you, Maya King, and thank you for your service as serving to the rest of the students. And congratulations on all your achievements and just your continuous, all the way through the finish line, dedication to being an awesome student. So thank you for all that you did, and we wanted to give you this. Okay, next, we are at the comments from our student representative. Miss King?
Good evening, Board President Shaw. Am I too close? I don't know. Good evening, Board President Shaw, members of the board, and distinguished guests. Congratulations to all students being honored tonight, or that were honored tonight, for the military as well as the band. Your achievements not going unseen, those are some pretty nice achievements. All the medals moving around was really cool to see, as well as the salute and stuff like that. Another congratulations to all the seniors in our district. It is an honor to be able to say that I'm graduating with the class of 2023. The amount of accomplishments that this class has made is insane, from students going to Yale, to Harvard, Boys' State, Girls' State, Military Band, everything that everyone has done. It's really nice to see a class like mine. We are on the final stretch of our journey, and I am beyond excited for what our future holds. And congratulations, and good luck to all seniors on all their future endeavors. I want to thank everyone here tonight for giving me the opportunity to be on this board and for trusting me to represent our students. Also, a large thank you to my supporters, particularly my mom, who has come to every single one of my meetings, even if they went on for hours, through all the screaming, yelling, everything. She's been at all of them. Thank you. It means the world to me to be able to be up here. I'm sad my time has ended, but I'm really, really excited to see what Chloe, the next representative, has in store for everyone. She seems great. Thank you all for this amazing opportunity and experience, as it has truly been wonderful for me. I hope everyone enjoys their night as well as their summer break. Thank you.
Next up are comments from employee representatives. Brenda Walker from ACT.
President Shaw, school board members, Superintendent Enfield, District Cabinet, members of the Chino Valley community, and guests. This board meeting is always a memorable time for ACT members because we get to recognize and celebrate students, each other, and staff members. First, on behalf of the members of ACT, I'd like to congratulate the seniors who have committed to military service. You've taken a bold step toward your future, and we admire your courage, and thank you for your service. We'd also like to congratulate the students from Ayala and Chino Hills High for their incredible awards. And to Maya King, please accept our gratitude for your service on the school board this year. You've shown us all your dedication through positive attitude, your reports, and your actions on behalf of the students. We appreciate you, and we wish you well. Next, I'd like to hand out some special gifts. It's time for us to name the ACT scholarship recipients. When your name is called, seniors, please come forward. ACT provides these scholarships to the students of our members. The students have to write an essay, get letters of recommendation, and also share a school or program that they've been accepted to. In the midst of all the other things they've been doing, seniors get to get you to the finish line, we're happy you applied. There are some students who are not able to make it tonight, but I would like to still name them. Dominic Gonzalez received his award last night at Chino High. I was happy to do that. Lucas Drake and Sophie Marceau. Congratulations to them. Now, please join me at the podium, the following students. Evan Jimenez. Daryl Johnson. Brian Ma. Annalise Mariscal. Aurora Weber. Spencer Schuler. And the last one is Claire Wilder.
Oh, okay. The board. One, two, three. Oh, sure.
Okay, next, we'd like to thank the district staff, administrators, parents, and students for making our Teacher Appreciation Week so special. There was food, there were gifts, there were tears, there were cheers. It was great for all of you to show your gratitude in so many creative and heartfelt ways. We appreciate our classified staff, too, and we hope that you were spoiled during your special week for all that you do as well. ACT members got together to honor this next group at our California Day of the Teacher event last week. But I wanted to share the names of the members that are probably the most excited right now. And those are our retiring members. They're happy. So I'm going to call out their names, and if they're here tonight, would you please stand? William Acker from Chino Hills High. Janelle Acker from Chino Hills High. Jeanette Altenberg, nurse from Health Services. Jacque Bettenbär from Chaparral. Tina Bosikis-Kochia from Butterfield. Blanca Braceno from Don Lugo. Roberta Calaco from Wickman. Mary Carpenter from Don Lugo. Larry Casillas from Townsend. Patricia Chilton from Oak Ridge. Karen Curry from Butterfield. Roseanne Graff from Wickman. Yvonne Gretzkowicz from Don Lugo. Maria Haverchi from Wickman. Deborah Klingelberg from Butterfield Ranch. Jane Luton from Wickman. Esperanza Martinez from Anna Borba. Tracy Moreno from the Special Ed Department. Melissa Nunukawa from Rolling Ridge. Maritza Patterson from Rolling Ridge. Melinda Pitts from Dixon. Mary Raglin from Don Lugo. Bradley Richardson from Briggs. Sherri Rivera from Cal Arrow. Laura Schlerf from Butterfield Ranch. Carolyn Strater from Wickman. Kurt Sumners from Liberty. William Thicpen from Don Lugo. And Elizabeth Williams from Chino. Congratulations to our retirees. We have two more people that earned our highest recognition. The first is our ACT Elementary Teacher of the Year. Would you come join me at the podium, Special Education Teacher from Hidden Trails, Rosio Rodriguez Mariscal? Okay. So as a special ed teacher, I know what you do. But your colleagues want to share how you impact the lives of the students and staff.
Emily speaking. I usually don't need one of these, so I'm scared. Okay, so members of the board and everybody else here, I just wanted to share a few things with you about Ms. Rosio. She's very caring, which of course is necessary as a teacher, but to all of her students and beyond. So even the students that are not her students, she's very caring, too. We work as a great team. We collaborate well together. She's always in on our PLCs, always trying to figure out what's going on, what needs to be needed. And she's constantly helping and making changes. So if this isn't working, what else can I do to help a student? What else can I do to help a student? So constantly changing. And on top of that, she's been very involved in our campus. She's even been our PTA president before. She's been on several committees before. And she has even been on our Talent Show Committee, which is a big job. So just lots of things that she's done on our campus. So we just wanted to make sure that we recognized her because she is truly the core of our upper grade learning center. So thank you very much.
Last but by no means least, we'd like to celebrate our ACT Nurse of the Year. Would you join me at the podium, Julianne Doherty? So Julianne has been a nurse in the district for five years, and she's touched the hearts of the teachers, the staff, and the students. To tell you a little bit more, we had someone who knows her well. Barry Ma.
Pretty loud. I can't say how appreciative Health Services of Julianne. She stepped in as a newer nurse, volunteering on every single committee, every single... COVID after hours, Sunday night at 7:00 PM. We're still receiving phone calls, never complained, reaches out to the newest nurses, ventures everywhere, we're just blessed that she's joined our team. I can't say anything. She's amazing. Thank you.
So that concludes my comments this evening. Thank you for your indulgence. It's been a pleasure to share these accomplishments and recognitions with you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Walker. We now have Dani Hernandez from CSCA.
Good evening, President Shaw, board members, Superintendent Enfield, Cabinet, and Community. First off, I wanted to share, thank you very much, Maya King and her mother, Rose. You are the reason and the example of what a student representative should be. You've rallied your students to come here. It's not easy always speaking from here to you guys, or with an audience behind. But you gathered your students that you represent and came to board meetings to share their feelings and their concerns with the board and the community, which is not an easy task. You've done an awesome job, so thank you for that. I also wanted to thank the district for allowing CSCA to have our car show. It's the first one in three years, four years. Headed here at the district, or excuse me, at the district parking lot. We were able to raise more money than our previous car show for scholarships for our members and their dependents, so thank you guys very much. This time of the year, because of COVID, the district had not sent out evaluation forms. So currently, classified staff is getting their evaluations, rightfully so. But for some reason, some administrators seem to expect perfection, which probably would not happen. This year, CSCA typically recognizes an unsung hero. This year, for 2023, we are recognizing the school secretary for all the work that they do going above and beyond. During COVID, one of the staff members shared with me that she was coming in at 7:00 in the morning and staying till 7:00 in the evening to make sure that attendance was done. She's not unique. All of them did that. Making sure that keys were there for staff, doors were open. It's a huge undertaking, so when we say an unsung hero, they go above and beyond every day. This year, we've asked Kailene Vaez to represent all the school secretaries from the elementary, junior high, and high school level. Kai, those of you that don't know, is Glenn Mead's school secretary. But she is also a resource for other school secretaries. New principals that come in, the phone call goes to her. Kai is always there to help, always. After hours, which, as the CSCA representative, isn't the greatest thing, but she does it. She makes sure that that school is taken care of. More importantly, she makes sure her school's taken care of. But all school secretaries, excuse me, school secretaries... But all school secretaries, excuse me, school secretaries do this on a daily basis, day in, day out. COVID just amplified what they do every day. This year, again, we recognize school secretaries as CSEA's unsung hero for 2023.
Thank you, President Hernandez, Distinguished Board. This is such a great honor for me. I've been with the district for over 20 years, starting at the district with the homeless program, the first case carrier that the district had, and recognizing over 250 homeless students within the district under HR-1, and started the first Christmas program for the homeless. So students are very near and dear to my heart. I've worked at Ayala High School, Canyon Hills Junior High, and now my home is presently Glenn Mead Elementary School. On behalf of all of the school secretaries I speak for at every level within Chino Valley Unified, I am honored to accept this award on their behalf. As a school secretary, sometimes our position, well not sometimes, but we do go above and beyond, excuse me, the normal paperwork of just a regular desk. There is so much more that's not spoken of. We comfort the student that is hurt or sad, especially our little tiny tater tots. We read to the little ones that are in the office. We jump in during playground duty if someone isn't there in high heels playing soccer. And in the mornings, when classes aren't covered, we are trying to call subs to get classroom coverage so our admin do not have to cover that class, or we don't have to pull intervention or RSP teachers because we know that those programs are very important to our student learning. And during COVID, as President Hernandez said, our hours were long. I learned so much about technology, trying to get students into their Google classrooms and ClassLink. And yes, sometimes 12 hours. Secretary is a treasured position, often unrecognized when things are going right, but an invaluable part of the heartbeat of every school, jumping from job to job. And my hats are way beyond eras, jumping from job to job and wearing hat to hat. And on behalf of every school secretary within Chino Valley Unified, I am truly honored to accept this award on every one of their behabes. Thank you, School Board, President Hernandez. I can't speak well beyond this, I'm so honored, thank you so much.
And finally, Ms. Shaw, President Shaw, you've addressed it or stated it earlier. This is one of my favorite meetings also. It's we recognize the students that are joining the armed services. But today, when Brenda gave the awards to our scholarships, it's rare that sometimes we don't get to see the administrators' kids accept something. But all the parents, the smile on their face, you can't duplicate that. This is one of the rare meetings that we're recognizing the students, more importantly, sometimes the parent, it takes everybody. When our staff opens the doors or cleans the bathrooms, we don't always get to see that. But thank you very much for your time and recognizing the students of CBUSD.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. We now have Barbara Bearden from CHAMP.
Good evening, President Shaw, School Board members, Dr. Enfield, Cabinet, and the Chino Valley community. Maya, I have been impressed by your grace and leadership over the year. I'm sorry, I'm very sad to see you go. While you, I'm sorry, let me start again. I have been impressed by your grace and leadership over the year while you have served on the Board of Education, and I was especially impressed when you served as the emcee at the Student Government Day. I know you're going to continue to explore your potential and your next adventure, and I know you will aspire for greatness. I want to congratulate all the young men and women who have made the commitment to serve our country as an individual who grew up in a military family. I understand the commitment you are making to our country, and I'm so incredibly proud. Next, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Karen Morales, the Walnut Elementary Principal, on her retirement from Chino Valley Unified School District. Mrs. Morales has served Walnut Elementary for 31 years as a teacher, assistant principal, and principal. CBUSD and Walnut Elementary won't miss her leadership, but we are excited to hear about her adventures in retirement. Additionally, I would like to recognize Mr. Kyle Schuler and his team at Buena Vista Continuation High School. They were recently recognized as a model continuation high school. Under Mr. Schuler's leadership, we have heard countless stories of student success thanks to the staff's commitment to our students. Congratulations to their team. Finally, I would like to congratulate everyone in the Chino Valley Unified School District as we end the 22-23 school year. There have been so many wonderful things to celebrate this school year under our Cabinet's direction. Our test scores were competitive in relation to districts like ours. Hidden Trails was recognized as a California distinguished school and opened a Mandarin dual-language immersion program. Thirty-three schools earned PBIS medals. Buena Vista earns the Model Continuation High School recognition. I could go on, but these accomplishments could not happen without Dr. Enfield and his Cabinet's support for our schools. So if we forget to thank you before we all leave for summer, please note that we appreciate each one of you. On a personal note, I would like to thank President Shaw, Mr. Cruz, and Mr. Bridge for attending Eagle Canyon's performance of Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. It was a tremendous honor to have you there, and I know our students really loved having you there. So thank you, thank you all, and have a wonderful weekend.
Before we move on to comments from the agenda, I want to thank all three of you for sharing with us and just allowing us to be part of the enjoyment, the enjoyment of just the achievements, the dedication, the love from our staff and teachers, so thank you for bringing that here tonight. Okay, now we're on to comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. Pat, are there any speakers, any requests to speak on non-agenda items?
Three requests to speak.
Thank you. Speakers will be called in the order the request was received. Please listen for your name and be prepared to approach the podium. Any comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item. Once the board has commenced deliberations on an issue, speaker cards will not be accepted. The board is very interested in your comments, but please bear in mind that the board typically does not respond to comments during the time on the agenda as it's reserved specifically for the public comments. Individual members may respond during their board comments at the end. Mr. Cruz, will you please explain the light system?
Speakers, you have three minutes to address the board. Librarian remarks to two new points. Begin comments at the green light. The yellow light means you have 30 seconds left, the red light means your time is over. Please adjust the microphone as necessary. Please refrain from making comments while speakers are at the podium. Thank you.
And please note that the Board Policy 1312.1 outlines the procedure for anyone who wishes to file a complaint against a district employee.
The first speaker is Melissa Campani, followed by Misty, followed by Virginia Renteria.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, Dr. Enfield, Superintendent, Cabinet members, and of course, community members. Melissa Campani, and I am here representing your county supervisor, Kurt Hagman. So just in time, as most of the schools are getting released for the year, we have some wonderful events for you all to attend. And we know that you'll all have time, nothing but time now to do so. So let me go ahead and just give you a rundown of our upcoming calendar. First, Supervisor Hagman, in partnership with the City of Chino, is offering a document shredding event. This will take place Saturday, June 3rd, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Do suggest that you come, not before 9:00 AM, but don't wait until noon either, it's a very, very popular event. And if the trucks reach capacity, of course, we have to close. The location will be the Chino City Hall. The address is 13220 Central Avenue in Chino. If you would like to pre-register, it does make it a little bit easier, it doesn't get you in front of the line, but it makes things go a little bit quicker. At SBC Shredding 060323, that's the date, .eventbrite.com. These events are always free to our San Bernardino County residents. And we do ask that you limit your shredding materials to three standard-size filing boxes so that we can have room for as many community members as possible. After that, right after that, Wednesday, June 7th, will be Supervisor Kurt Hagman's open house. This is going to be a wonderful event, right in front of his district office, which is in the city of Chino Hills. The address is 14010 City Center Drive, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Supervisor Hagman has plenty of county departments coming out and bringing information and employees. So if you have wanted to find out about your county, or maybe find out some information, let's just say from the Assessor Recorder's Office or the Aging and Adult Services, they will all be out there with us to answer your questions. We also have some local community partners, such as IVHS to tell us about their new hospital program for residents, and Omnitrans, which does offer bus rides to our students at a very good price. If you would like more information, please give us a call at 909-465-5265. And the Chino Valley firefighters, professional firefighters, will be providing food. And I hear we're gonna have some ice cream too, just to get you guys out there. And one last big event for Supervisor Hagman, this is a good one, this is his expungement and job fair. He has hosted this event before, however, it was a different location. This year's location is going to be at the old Ontario International Airport, Terminal 1. This event will be taking place June 15th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Lots of employers are hiring, some big names, including several employers at the airport itself. They also are giving us the opportunity to meet with the law offices of the Public Defender to get assistance. So if you've ever had questions, or maybe you think you might have something and need a little help and don't know where to go, this is a terrific opportunity, we encourage everyone to do so. So once again, June 15th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And you can register at 6-15-jobfair eventbrite.com. I know there's a lot of information here, so I encourage you to follow Supervisor Hagman on social media, Facebook, Instagram, or as the kids call it, Insta. So you're right in with it, and that way you can follow along with his free events, thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate it, I see that you have flyers, and Dr. Enfield will be more than happy to put them on our peach jar for our parents if you can get them over to our Board Secretary, Pat Kaler, please. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Okay, thanks.
Misty, followed by Virginia Renteria.
Good evening, Board. Yesterday, I showed up to work, and I was informed by my boss that I had a fan club who had put together a montage of my speeches here at the school board meetings, and tagged my boss in these videos, trying to get me fired, claiming that I am racist, prejudiced, hateful, that my speeches are full of hate. And I'm just in shock. Then, when my boss proceeded to defend me and say that I have freedom of speech, they decided to further bully her and tell her that they will spread the word about what type of doctor she is, and that they will not have people come to her office, so... What's concerning to me is that, Mr. Bridge, you are a follower and a supporter of this group that is doing this type of thing. I guess I'm an easy target because I come to all the school board meetings and I'm very vocal. And I guess I would just like to ask parents, because I know I'm not the only one that has the feelings that I have, and I'd like to call to action other parents to stand up and be here. To me, what this group did is basically cyberbullying, and it's wrong. They are trying to intimidate me into being quiet, into not standing up for what I believe, and it's not gonna work. I will not back down. And fortunately for me, I'm not gonna get fired because my boss has the same beliefs, so... Let me just read this, you know, it's interesting too, they kind of lumped me into the Calvary Chapel. And I started thinking about this. There are a lot of churches in Chino Valley, a lot of churches. A lot of people have Christian beliefs and Christian values. I do not belong to the Calvary Chapel, but I am a supporter. And I'm just gonna read this from Psalms 109. "Hold not thy peace, O God of my praise; for the mouth of the wicked and the mouth of the deceitful are opened against me; they have spoken against me with a lying tongue."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia Renteria?
Can I close it up? Good evening, Board. I just want to say it was a great meeting tonight, I mean, it's so awesome. As far as like the Christians, the parents that have the Christian beliefs, yes, I sat back there and I prayed over all these kids that are going to serve in our military. What an awesome honor. But what I came here tonight was that there's a movement. Parents are getting sick and tired, just like Americans, there's a movement in America, and the fight, we are winning. But what concerns me is in our schools. Riverside Unified School District, they have some pretty good meetings with parents speaking up. Glendale Unified School also has the same thing. And our meetings have been a little bit fired up sometimes. I'm concerned, which I brought up the book before, It's Perfectly Normal, and My Princess Boy, which were really border pornography. There's a list of about 15 books that have been posted, I believe it's the Alley Times, which is really kind of shocking. That's what gave me encouragement that we are making a change for the better. Queer, Queer is one of the books, All Boys Aren't Blue, The Bluest Eyes, Out of Darkness, Framer, The Hate You Give, Lawn Boy, Tricks, This Book Is Gay, The Absolute True Diary of a Part-Time Indian, Thirteen Reasons Why, Me and Earl, and The Dying Girl, Sold. These are just the titles and Melissa. I could read all about, a little synopsis of what each and every book is about, and they're really disgusting. I know Mr. Na had suggested that we have one of Cameron's books put into our schools, and there was a lot of backlash by the usual group that come here, the group that has attacked Misty, which are adults, probably about 40-something, and they dress like 13-year-olds, being hip and open to a movement. But there's a lot of us, a lot of parents. Maybe we're not all here, but there's a lot of parents that watch online, and a lot of parents don't want this sort of stuff at the school. Whatever your choice is for your child, that's your choice, but don't make us part of the delusion of this transitional, LBGB, whatever it is, movement. But I would like to know, is there any way that we can actually go into the libraries? Or one, maybe one of yous, maybe Mr. Bridge, go into our libraries and really look at some of the books that are in our schools?
Thank you.
Thank you to all of our speakers. We're now on to changes and deletions, Pat, are there any changes or deletions? Thank you, Pat. Moving on to action items, the first item is 2A1. It's amended facilities memorandum of understanding by and between Chino Valley Unified School District and Allegiant Steam Academy Thrive 2023/2024. It recommends that the Board of Education approve the amended facilities memorandum of of understanding by and between Chino Valley Unified School District and Allegiant Steam Academy Thrive 2023/2024. Pat, are there any speakers?
There are none.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Two seconds.
Got a motion in a second by Mr. Nah, Mr. Cruz. Board members, are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Preferential? The motion passes with a vote of five to zero with preferential voting yes. We're now on to item 2A2. Public hearing to receive community input on the naming of Preserve School Number Two recommends that the Board of Education conduct a public hearing to receive community input of the naming of Preserve School Number Two. I now open the public hearing at 7:11 PM. Pat, do we have any speakers?
There are none.
I now close the public hearing at 7:11 PM. The next item is item 2A3. Selection and approval of Scenario One as the school boundaries for Cal-Aro Preserve Academy and Preserve School Number Two. It recommends that the Board of Education select and approve Scenario Number One as school boundaries for Cal-Aro Preserve Academy and Preserve School Number Two. Pat, are there any speakers?
There are none.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Moved.
Motion by Mr. Nah, can I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Cruz. Board members, are there any comments, questions, discussions? Being that there's none, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Preferential? The motion passes with a vote of five to zero with preferential voting yes. We are now on to item 2B1. It's declaration of the need for fully qualified educators for the 2023/2024 school year. It recommends that the Board of Education approve the declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the 2023/2024 school year. Pat, are there any speakers?
There are none.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Nah, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Board members, are there any comments, questions, or discussions? Being that there isn't any, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Preferential? The motion passes with a vote of five to zero with preferential voting yes. That concludes the action items. We are now on to consent. Pat, are there any speakers on consent items?
There are none.
Board members, do you have any polls? Mr. Bridge?
No polls.
Mr. Cruz?
No polls.
Mr. Monroe?
No polls.
Mr. Nah?
I have no polls.
And I have no polls. For the remainder of the consent items, oh, we're, we took a, okay, we'll take a vote. Oh, can I have a motion? Sorry, thanks, Pat.
Second.
Nah and Mr. Cruz, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Preferential? The motion passes with a vote of five to zero with preferential voting yes. We are now at information items. Pat, are there any requests to speak?
There are none.
Questions from the board? Being that there's none, we're now on to communications. Mr. Bridge?
Thank you, President Shaw. Just have several things, but I'll go through them very quickly. First of all, Maya, thank you again. I know I was early last time at the board meeting to congratulate you on your service on the board, but I wanted to offer my thanks again tonight and appreciate all you've done for the students of our district this year. Also, congratulations to all of our graduates for going into the military service, and I want to wish them the best in their career and service to their country. I had a chance to talk to Zane before the meeting, the young man that's going into the Military Academy, which I think is a tremendous honor for a student of this district to go to, and confided in him that I will root for him in every football game except one. My brother being a graduate of the Naval Academy, that's one game where I obviously have to take sides. And also, I want to congratulate the Ayala High School on their awards, their band percussion award, excuse me. That was tremendous, and if you heard the sound of all the medals with them walking up here, that is just terrific that they are able to do that. And having gone to the band showcase last night, you get a taste of what they do and what all of our students do in the area of music. And it's one of the things that I think I would like to have seen the mayor at the State of the City address. She numbered off a lot of things, but I think this district not only has what I think is a terrific educational program, but especially in music. To see everything that all of our schools are doing in the band showcases and in music is just terrific. Along with that, congratulations to all the ACT Scholarship Award winners tonight. As I mentioned about the band showcase, I did also attend the Don Lugo Band Showcase besides the Ayala Band Showcase, and it, I was able to get to three out of four of them, and they were just terrific. I already mentioned the State of the City of Chino address. I was able to stop by the ACT Day of the Teacher celebration that they had on March 10th, California Day of the Teacher. Danny Hernandez, thank you for the invite to the CSEA Car Show. I got by there. One of the warm days that we've had on the weekend, and I was glad we had the solar panels up because it was nice to be in the shade. Also attended the Glenn Mead Kindergarten Circus along with Mr. Monroe and Ms. Shaw, and I'll probably let them continue with their remarks there, but it was terrific to see that and a lot of fun. Mrs. Bearden mentioned the Charlie and the Chocolate Factory play at Eagle Canyon. That was terrific to watch the students perform, and I was just impressed with all the stage hands and the behind-the-scenes as quickly as they got the sets changed and set up for the actors. Last night was the Chino Hills Parks and Recreation Commission that I was able to get to after the finish of the band showcase at Ayala. One thing I wanted to mention there, because we've talked about it the last couple of meetings, there were 61 applications for the Teen Advisory Board. That is just tremendous for the support and the interest in that. They mentioned that they're not going to be able to interview all 61. They're going to pare down the applications to a reasonable number to interview and then begin interviews around June the 5th, but they were very pleased with the number of students that showed their interest in that. Next week, I'm looking forward to attending the Don Lugo, Chino Hills, and Buena Vista commencement ceremonies, and I know that the traditional calendar schools get out next Thursday, the 25th, and just want to wish everyone on the traditional calendar to enjoy their summer break, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Bridge. Mr. Nah?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Maya for you spending many years in our school district and being a blessing to many of us, especially for your mom. And also, I often see your principal, Mr. John Miller, always taking picture of you because he's so proud of you, and I could tell. You have been a stellar student representative, and you are always well-poised, and we're just so proud of you. That's all I can say. And I hope for your successful journey in your higher education and your college, and you can spread your wings and serving the multitude, multitude for the love and also the common sense, which we really needed. So thank you for your service, and thank you for your mom. May I have you stand up again for the last time? If we can give you big hands for your sacrifice. This is what family matters, and without family, we're nobody. Thank you. Thank you. I wasn't able to make a report on it last time, but I was able to attend Theater Arts Program at Don Lugo High School. We have a brand-new theater arts teacher who was able to give us a great gift, a program. It was called Adam's Family. It was a brand-new version for our brand-new program, and it was an amazing performance by all the students who were involved. And more than that, they were able to actually recruit few special ed students actually playing the acts. And we wouldn't be able to tell because they were really professional. So I give great kudos for our new theater teacher at Don Lugo High School and all the students who had performed that night. Thank you for the invitation from our parent here that who had invited me and I think Mr. Cruz, we were there together. So we had a great time. And also, the district band, our music performance bands, they're awesome throughout the district, even the junior high schools. We have a real stellar program, and tonight we watched it in action through their achievement from Ayala High School and Chino Hills High School. So thank you for your excellent work and dedication. Again, almost the year is ending for our high school seniors. Yes, I do remember my high school senior years. I was kind of happy because I knew that I was turning into a real adult, and I didn't know what it meant, but I thought it was a freedom, but a certain amount of fear. But fear, no longer I have, but I do have concern for our youth because we need to have more common sense back in every sector of our lives back again. And I'd like to ask Dr. Anfield, I think he stepped out. Oh, yeah, here, it's so easy. Could we have somebody from Risk Management Director talk to our speaker here? She has some concern with being bullied and being attacked in cyber manners and all that, and that is not a professional, and that is concern for me because this is a public forum where people are able to view their perspective freely in a safe manner. And I think we need to be there to protect their rights. So I'd like to have our director at Risk Management talk to our speaker tonight and give her some guidance and points so that this one does not happen again. And that will be my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nah. Mr. Cruz?
Yes, I attended the 5K Let It Be Foundation. They helped children with leukemia, and they've done a fantastic job. And, you know, they've been around since 2008, I believe. Been a while. And Ms. Bearden, the Charlie and the Chocolate Factory was pretty, it was amazing. I really enjoyed it, but I got handed to you. You know, every time I see you, you always pour out your love, and all that is what you are inside. And what I see is that's who you are. You're thoughtful, you're kind, you are a very loving woman, and it's nice to see that. A lot of people hide their feelings, but I think it's excellent. You know, I have to share something with you. I, this week, I went to another school site, and the security approached me, and he looked at me, I kind of ignored it because I just, because I was with my other colleague, and then my colleague said, wait up. He said, do you remember me? He tells me, you know, do you remember me? So he was a student like six, seven years ago, and I looked at him and I remembered him. But as I looked at him, I saw something. I saw something, you know? And then, then I came back, I came back where I work at, and I mentioned about this man, this young man, and I got emotional. I got emotional because I saw purity and innocent in this guy. I said to myself, only he'd be knew what he really was, because life can change a person. And that bothered me a lot. I see you the same way, that you're very sensitive. You see things that maybe most people don't see. So you keep that up, you never lose it, and who cares what people think? That's who you are. So keep it up. And Misty, you do what you do because you're on target. If those pricks do it, you let them do it, and more power to you because it makes you feel great inside, because they've done it to me, too. They didn't call one person, they called at least four or five people on me. You know, that's okay. You just keep it up because you're on target, and what you're saying is truth, and you're effective. So keep it up. And Maya, you've done a fantastic job, and your mother has always been there. But you know what I like? I like the idea that you've experienced this, and whatever love you have in 25, 30 years, yeah, run for office, run for Water Board, City Council. The love of serving for people of what you believe in, because that's all it is, because you know what you give? You give values. You don't need to know policies, you don't need to know this, that. All you bring is your values, and those people, if they vote for you, it's because they love your values. Simple as that. And like you, Misty, you got certain values, but what they did was, it's really disgusting. Disgusting. Good job, Maya. As for your mom being here, she loves you immensely, and she's so proud, just the idea that she was here all the time. I want to talk about the Wellness Center, because like anything else, everything has its beginnings, and then it gets distorted. By then, it's so hard to change. But you know, I've been, I made aware of some concerns lately associated with the Wellness Center at schools. Mostly, the concerns are whether these centers would be hijacked at some point into something that we never intended to happen, without being an alarmist, which I have the right to be. Jumping to conclusions, I feel we need to really have a look at what these centers are in providing, but more importantly, making sure they don't get out of control, overstepping the boundaries of parental rights, knowing that we just set up a resolution for parental rights. This is very crucial, everyone to understand. We need to help families together and be vigilant. You know, I attended, I attended a local event, and there was a legislator. And they're discussing about, they're just talking, but discussing about wellness centers becoming clinics. You have to ask yourself, what does clinics mean? Well, I frankly don't know, but when I hear clinics, I hear abortion clinics. I hear affirming gender at our school site. So these are the things that parents need to know what may happen in the future. AB 665, the Wellness Counselors, it's still going, you know, it's a bill, it's not law, requires that mental health treatment or counseling include involvement of minor parents or guardians unless the professional person treating or counseling the minor determines that the involvement would be inappropriate for other purposes, not getting your parents involved. Now, now, who are these wellness people? Are they going to be like medical professionals, social workers? Or are they just going to be outside forces determining? And like I said, everything has its beginning, everything has its justification, makes common sense, but then later on, it gets distorted. So, Sonia, I really want, I really want the board to look further into this and make the parents really in charge, and just the idea of having these closed rooms and the privacy and the parents not even knowing what's going on. And then, you know, you always need a certificated person in a classroom, so parents need to know what's going on. This is good stuff for kids. This is good stuff. But in Sacramento, man, they got their head up there. I can't say it. We got to, I want to shut, I want to shut them down and look at it in the summer how we can not, for them not to be hijacked it, okay? I think that's common sense and in September we can open them up and maybe allow parents to be informed, maybe even parents, I mean, if you've got these, if you've got these wellness centers, pick counselors that are going to be not certified, well, parents can be involved too. So I'm going to share with you some California bills that are just up and coming, you know? AB 742, the ban the use of police dogs for arrests and crowd control. AB Bill 1299, defund school resource officers. These people are psychos. AB 599 would remove having possessed or used tobacco or products containing this and this in grade enrollment, may not be suspended or recommended for expulsion. I mean, the whole issue with this is peer pressure. You don't want other kids being influenced. And then AB 230, which is really off-the-wall stuff, people, at the elementary level, they want to add tampon dispensaries at third grade. I mean, I don't know. I don't know what's going on. Also, there's something I want you to be aware of, and that is, in the future, they desire, at the moment, it's all quiet and all that, but they desire to accelerate the scheduled vaccines. And that's something that all of us have to be very cautious. We don't know what these vaccines now have. Will they have a lot of mRNA vaccines? Are they going to change them up? Because there's been many, many studies that these mRNA vaccines are hurtful. You had a study in the Science and Immunology, IgG4 class, which is an antibody switched, implying that your immune system is damaged permanently. So, that's all I'll bring up with that. So, we have to be aware. And you know, I know I'm talking too much, but you know, you just have to use common sense and see what's going on. And that is, you know, we were so concerned with, with, with America's not getting sick and so we force people, we corrode people to not get vaccinated and this and that. And then, and then you just got to itch your head and the borders are open, contagious diseases, it's like they care less. And then they go, oh, we got to accelerate the vaccine schedule. It is psychotic. That's what we're dealing with. And we need to wake up and this board, the only way we can change, as they put these laws in, policies is the key to, to have safety in our children's lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Monroe?
First off, let me just thank Maya for her service and dedication to this board. I thought you conducted yourself admirably and your thoughts that you shared each week were well put together and thought provoking. So thank you and I wish you much success in your future. I do want to thank Ms. Walker for recognizing Teacher of the Year and Nurse of the Year. As somebody that works hard every year, it's nice to get little gestures like that and show an appreciation, as we did last week with the teachers. I know I was able to drop by little goodies to a couple of schools last week and to show their appreciation for their teachers and nurses. I do want to thank Mr. Hernandez for representing, recognizing the secretaries. I think they truly are unsung. So I had a great secretary at Don Lugo, Ms. Vicki, who's still over there, that I still dropped by and say hi to her and worked with her for many years. And if ever I had a question, she had the answer. And I think if you go around campus, that's probably about every secretary on every campus really knows the ins and outs of the working. So it's great to see them recognized. Real briefly, I know I've talked about the music programs before. Congratulations, Ayala, Chino Hills. Success, I think, is really small when we're talking about those programs. They really are a legacy. They have been so good for so long. They're legacy programs. I mean, you're talking, when you're talking about a program, it's been decades that they've been elite performers. And so I just want to congratulate them not only on their victory, but on setting a legacy of success and champions. I want to congratulate the military service of, those that are graduating, going into the military. There is something to say about an individual that will put themselves above all else. And I don't think anything represents that any better than somebody that serves our great country and wears a uniform of our armed forces. They are really told where to go, what to do, how long they're going to be there. They're paid next to nothing. And a lot of them are very good at it and they all do it willingly. It's an all-volunteer force. So to have that heart of service of the men and women that are graduating to go on and do that, I want to commend them on that commitment and I also want to commend their families for raising young people that value that service and honor. I do want to congratulate the upcoming graduates. As we start in the next week, it'll be fun to actually attend some of those. I did go to the Glenmead Circus, it was fantastic. There's something about seeing an elementary performance, and unfortunately, this was the only one that I got to see with my schedule. But every parent in that crowd is so excited about what their kid is doing on stage. And if you were ever a parent, it brings back the same excitement of when your kids perform. So it was, it was great to see and relive, I guess through others of what my kids once did and enjoy that, so. And I will not be here the next meeting, I'll be on vacation. I do want to leave, I was, I had the opportunity today to spend the late morning, early afternoon at the Nixon Library and walk through that. And there was a quote that caught me because oftentimes we talk about, we've never seen times like these before and the hardships and we're in a unique time. And you know, I often say, are we though? We've had problems before and we've had diversity and opposition. They may have been different issues, but they really had the same feeling and they really had the strong beliefs on either side. And there was one quote that President Nixon said at the time, is we cannot learn from one another until we stop shouting at one another. And somewhere along the lines, we've all, we've all got to stop screaming at everybody else and we've got to sit down and talk in a voice that we can not only hear our voices, but hear the words that are being said. And so I just hope that we can take that to heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Superintendent, Dr. Anfield?
Maya, I want to congratulate you and thank you for the awesome job you've done serving on this board. Over the last year, I really enjoyed listening to you, your insights, your comments, and especially how you recognize all the great things that our fellow students do across the district. I really do appreciate hearing those things and that you take the time out to really recognize the work that the kids do in our district and the things that are going on. So thank you and I appreciate that. And I also want to congratulations, or congratulate you on your graduation soon here from Chino High School and I wish you the best. Congratulations again, thank you. And then lastly, I want to recognize our seniors. It's a, we're a unified school district and this is a culminating activity is for our graduations. And so I'm excited for our seniors who will all be graduating here coming up and I want to wish them the best in their endeavors as they move forward. And I hope that they look back and really, truly enjoyed all the time that they had here in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anfield. And I guess that's me. Maya, again, I just want to echo what I said earlier. Thank you. Thank you for being an example and we just wish and hope that you have, we know you're going to be successful, there's no doubt in my mind, but thank you for just serving and continue to serve because there's a lot of people that need your voice. And thank you to your mom and I see your dad probably there tonight too. So thank you guys for supporting her and just giving her the tools to be a great student here at Chino Valley. I also want to thank all the school sites for inviting us to, and parents for inviting us to events, award ceremonies, just all the campus things that are going on. I know we can't make it to everything, but I can say that everything we got invited to, we pretty much were there, at least one of us. So please, don't stop inviting us. I'm sure my family wants me to say other, but it is, it's very exciting, at least for me, because it also reminds me of the purpose that I'm here. I get to see the excitement, I get to see the great things because oftentimes we hear a lot of bad things and just to see the excitement of the parents, like how some of my colleagues said, it's really awesome to be invited to those things. So we really do appreciate and thank you for inviting us to events and ceremonies and awards and performances because, I mean, it is, it is a beautiful thing. And with that, on May 9th, I was invited to the PICA graduation at Chino High School. I didn't even know what PICA was, so it was great for me to be able to be there and understand it and learn more about it. And it was really exciting to see the students applauding the parents for going through this program and graduating. It actually made me kind of tear up while I was sitting there because you just see the, you see the reverse excitement. Usually, it's the parents excited and tearing up and clapping and then you see the students just so excited about their parents going through this program. And the program was developed so the parents can get more involved in their children's education, which I think was awesome and amazing. So being there was a blessing. I am very grateful that I was invited and I got an extra treat because I was able to step over into the band showcase and watch them and the choir perform, so that was pretty cool too. On May 10th, we all attended, most of us attended the, actually, I think all of us did, the State of the City, where our amazing mayor of the city of Chino put on a presentation and just informed us everything that is going on in the city. And they also presented some awards. It was a nice night just to be able to see all the great things. On the May 11th, I went to Glenmead Circus and it was absolutely adorable. And if you guys don't go to these events and your kids are grown, maybe pop into one because they are just so fun and it's so cute to see the kids so excited and I'm actually truly amazed by their performances. And it seems like the younger they get, the more, I don't know, just amazing they get on their performances. I remember when we were little, it was like homemade costumes and these costumes are decked out, the kids are saying long, long skits and I, I mean, it's just, it's truly amazing. On May 12th, I actually was able to, I had asked Dr. Anfield prior, since I sit on the commission board for ROP, I wanted to learn more about our career centers and ROP and just understand that if I'm going to serve our district in that commission, I need to have a great understanding and see how those are run. So I asked to have, even though we toured all the schools, I wanted to specifically tour those and meet our amazing people that are serving in those centers. Julian took his time out of the day, he took me to every single center that we have and he answered all my questions, offered a lot of knowledge that I wasn't aware of. So I was very excited to tour all those and I'm grateful for that. On May 15th, we went to Eagle Canyon's performance for Charlie and The Chocolate Factory and I think that needs to be recorded and put on YouTube because, first of all, Charlie was amazing, but all the students were great, the costumes were amazing, the sets were amazing. And then the most beautiful part behind all of that was all the teachers who put and poured love into that. I mean, they were there every step of the way for the students, but the students wouldn't have been able to do it without them and their principal as well. So thank you for doing that. That was absolutely amazing and thank you for inviting us, Ms. Bearden. On May 16th, that was, I am losing my days, I think that was yesterday, I went to the DARE graduation at Levi-Dickey. That was actually really exciting for me because I was a, not only a DARE graduate, but I won the essay during that time. And the DARE program back then for me as a child helped me because I had parents who were into drugs and I was able to share that story with a lot of students. So if you're not aware of the DARE program, I know that there's a lot of people who like or loved and then it got rid of, but they are revamping it. And Levi-Dickey was one of our first schools to have that program and to be there was an honor. So I do appreciate them inviting me to that as well. I want to give out a shout out to all of our Odyssey of the Mind students going to the World Finals coming soon. I think it's next week or right after school, they leave on a plane and they head out. I want to, parents always come in and let us know specific things, so if I forget anybody, it's not because I forget, or I'm not forgetting them, I just wasn't aware of them. Our fourth graders at Rolling Ridge, go do your thing, we're very proud of you. And we also have our Country Spring Elementary, we have second through sixth graders going on that trip as well. We are very proud of you and we're also very proud of everyone and all the educators that helped our students get to that point. I want to thank our law enforcement, thank you for always being here and keeping us safe. Thank you to our security guards, you know I love you guys. Thank you for all of our students who are joining the military, what a sacrifice. And I know your families are sacrificing, thank you for doing that. We are so appreciative of all of that. We are so proud of you guys too. I have a cool announcement and I was told I'm able to share and some of you know, flag football is coming to next school year for our girls and that is amazing and I'm told it's going to be at every school, every high school, school site. So probably in the beginning, they'll be playing each other, but I know a lot of girls wanted that and to be able to have our school start that program, our schools start that program is pretty cool. I know there's probably going to be a lot of kinks to iron out, but our girls have an opportunity to join that sport that is upcoming and there's going to be a lot of scholarships from what we're being told. And it's just a new sport for our girls to be able to get involved with. I'm very grateful our district has decided to accept that challenge. Thank you to all of our teachers, I know that there's a week that celebrates you, but we celebrate you all year, so thank you. I want to thank all of our nurses, it was Nurse Week, you guys are amazing and when us parents can't tend to those boo-boos, you guys are doing it for us when our kids are at school, so thank you for doing that for us. I want to congratulate all of our seniors, you're almost there, do not give up. And all of our promoting sixth and eighth graders, you guys are going into new and exciting adventures as well, so we are definitely proud of you and excited for your new adventures. And just remember, we're here for you, reach out to us if you need anything. And lastly, I want to just, I know Mr. Cruz got into some bills, but bills are important in my eyes because they affect the way that we are able to run the district. And I know a lot of parents have emailed me about the tampons in the boys', in the girls' restrooms, in the boys' restroom, sorry. That was a law put in place and our district was forced to comply and put it in there. The law said that it had to be in at least one men's restroom for sixth grade and up. Unfortunately, Chino Valley, we have our elementaries that go up to sixth grade, so it did affect our schools. But I do want you to be aware of something and if this is concerning to you, I want you to get ahead of the game because right now, these bills are moving through. This is when you guys can be parents active, community members active and help us so we don't have to enforce these awful things, in my opinion. We have AB 230 over on Rancho Cucamonga, their assembly member, Elise Gomez Reyes, decided that she wants to propose a bill that would put them for third grade and up. So, please, if that means anything to you, start calling her office. AB 665, Mr. Cruz touched on something, I wasn't, I was not aware he was going to talk about bills, but that one is near and dear to my heart because you always hear the complaints, but the problem is, is if we, again, don't get in front of it, then what do we do? And I'm, and this is very passionate, passionate thing for me because these things don't allow our district to do the wonderful things if these things are passed that they're capable of doing. It would allow mental health professionals, not even licensed anybody, to take out a child from their home. That's a license, that's not even a licensed person. Right now, you have Child Protective Services that can do that. There's things in place, laws in place that would allow them to do that properly. This is mental health professionals. I mean, that to me should be alarming and if we're going to have, like he mentioned, in my eyes, I'm looking at it as when, and I'm not trying to go on a rant over here, but when Monroe and I were over in DC, you had Mr. Becerra who, you know, controls our health in the United States or at the federal level, and he told us board members to have cojones, take his money, let him in to put clinics on campuses. Whatever clinics are, I don't know what they are, but I'm telling you, that's firsthand what we heard. And then we see these bills starting to be proposed. That to me is an alarming thing. And I don't want the district to be forced to put these things on here because I don't think any mental health professional should be allowed to deem that a child is not safe. That's not their job. That should have never been their job. not safe, that's not their job, that should have never been their job. So please, if that means anything to you, get ahead of the game. AB 1078, they're trying to make the school districts attain approval from the California State Board of Education before removing library books or curriculum from the classroom. Again, they're trying to take away local control on how our district is ran, so Dr. Anfield, who you guys love, and his cabinet, won't be able to do exactly what they want to do, and we won't be able to make the decisions if this is passed. Now, if you guys speak up, I do see it going through right now in Sacramento, and it's being amended because people are speaking up, so your voice does matter, so please speak up. Those are the dark and scary things of education going on, I think if we start getting ahead of the game, then we can have a district ran like it should be, and we can have all of our amazing staff be able to do the things that they can, and we can have parents feeling safe to send their kids to our schools, so just please be aware of these things. With that, I ask you guys, and Misty, I am so sorry that you had to deal with that, my heart and prayers go out to you, if there's anything I can do to help you, please let me know. Nobody should experience that, no matter what anybody's opinion is, but with that, I just want to tell our students again and our educators, you're almost there, the year's almost up, you get a little break, don't give up, finish the year strong, and thank you. I now adjourn our regular Board of Education meeting at 7:51.